We're at six oh five and we did our walkthrough. School, including the new components of the HPA system now in the middle high school. Next order of business is the approval. Twenty twenty three.
I'm not the most good page of minutes I presented.
And Joe, any discussion on that? All those who think the private saying aye. Opposed, and I will abstain with an act present to that. But that mostly carries. Next up is the approval of the school board minutes of August twenty third, the regular. Regular school board minutes.
Make the most to approve those minutes as I presented.
Sir, Henry, Joe, you for the comment on those.
Great job, Karen. Thank you.
And all those who think the private saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please, again, will be staying, and that mostly carries. This is the approval of the non-public session in August twenty third.
Not the most really Thursday presenting.
Karen, sir. All those who think the private saying aye. Opposed, or extensions, I will abstain, and that mostly carries. So next up is correspondence, just like your email.
Yes, you definitely correspond to that. That will see you down at Microsoft.
So we received an email regarding. The so the pushback to the startup date. To August tenth, but we'll be discussing that walkthrough. Part of it sounded like part of that pushback date also includes the installation of. So that he had that hot water and then also that hot water. So they start a time, and I served for that. Sounds like we're going to be looking at a change order for that.
Um.
For the hot water.
We did. Well, we didn't change it to something else last time, but the monthly money for the. Water heater wasn't that. It was that was included in the in the last meeting.
Well, okay, Mark had just mentioned that he was expecting one.
My venture was install, and he wanted to keep. Which was included in the. Was that. Second, it's thirty, you know, forty. Right. However, it's eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We would take that out of about eight hundred dollars. Sure.
It's probably not going to require anymore, actually. A pushback, a little less than a month of the startup day system. I don't anticipate that we're going to have any food needs.
As long as it's been. Don't make it hotter.
Please don't turn it on. Any other correspondence?
Just the NCS. Write down.
And it's the schedule. Thank you for that. Um, step is the method of reports.
Wrapping up the end of year reports. By the next meeting, or before the next meeting, so I might. Email if you want to commit a sign. Five, I mean, it was twenty five, but part of that also. Is voting on the. Three teenage, so at this March. Annual meeting. The district voted. Increase the amount of the fund balance retained from that two and a half percent to. Up to five. So basically doubles what we were doing before, so at this point, it looks like, yeah, we will definitely have, so it'll be about three hundred and forty thousand. That would be the max.
Do we have that in unexpendable fund balance?
Yes. Just running through the numbers one more time. But I'll need an official vote on that, and you can wait till the next meeting.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but it can retain up to five percent. And again, if we don't use it, it then goes back. Fund balance for the next year.
Okay.
Because it goes back into offset the appropriation, correct?
No, it goes right back into fund balance, just to cross and start over again. Doesn't build or anything like that.
That's a. But if we don't use it, right?
If we don't use it. We did use last year's to offset for part of the middle high school HVAC, that's part of that one, it goes, piece of that one. But going forward, if we need to access, so whatever we set aside, if we need to access that before the end of next year, you do an emergency or whatever, we just have to hold a public hearing to do that. Don't access it, it just goes right back in and rolled into.
Right.
Through the calculation of the new.
So whatever we don't retain, that balance goes into offset appropriations.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you. That's.
Okay, thank you. And back to again, so your business.
Yes, we have, I have a note here in my memo where I did attend a superintendent's meeting on September seventh. And, oh, yeah, this is the one that, and that we were getting, again, another hundred thousand for each building. You're beginning that.
The safe school, so that's like for the entrance phase and such? Fantastic.
We can do the windows and doors.
Have to reapply, but nothing's come out yet, but that's it. We have to reapply for the whole process. We get approved.
Fantastic.
So we go the same, follow the same process we did.
That's good news.
If I recall, there was sort of a bigger scale of a project that we were contemplating here for the. For the vestibule at the elementary display, but so we didn't do, is that, we sound like we're.
We just didn't have enough money.
Yeah, is that something?
Prices, we would probably go.
They wanted to do something similar to what the high school did, but up here, but there wasn't enough funds to get it done.
It is, would this get us over the hump there?
That would finish off that, so we used a little bit of this past summers, although it worked, again, we. We're ordering those items, you know, we wait, we got the contract, we had, it's scheduled to be done next year, right, because the delay in the supplies and some of the materials that are needed will be done next spring, or when school gets out next year, but the last same money that we just got. But there's still a little bit more that we would still need to do. And then we'll be able to do that. Yeah.
So are we talking about the same scope of project as Stuart Anderson came in and presented us with some options about not quite that big?
But he's already designed all that, again, we've done, we did. A few years ago, we did the high school, we did part of it, because that's whatever money is left at that point, and then this last summer money, we're doing a little bit more, and then if we get this next pot of money, we could finish with that.
That's one, yeah, perfect.
Okay, next is, there was an informal session scheduled for September twenty sixth of the ninth month, White Mountain Regional High School, from six to seven thirty to go over the new rules and the revisions that remain, however, that meeting was canceled due to not enough people. So if I found out where there's other meetings going on throughout the state, so if I could get that list of where it is, I'll just send it out to you, if anybody wanted to sort of that thing. Yet some of the other presentations were a little more detailed as far as. What the three oh six is, what changes were really there, this is, this particular one was going to be, from Fred, was going to be like an overall summary of the like that, so maybe maybe some more detailed ones should be, you know, better, so as soon as I get some of that information, I'll send it out. There is also a law conference which happens every year, so as a kid, if it's on a law conference, or all attorneys speak on the different laws and changes and issues that concerns that the districts have had throughout the years. Yeah, throughout the year, and then a schedule for October fourth at the home center, and that is invitation is to board school board members and, you know, who is school visiting, so if anybody wants to go to the.
Is there, is there, is there a large cost to that?
It's not bad. It's pretty average. Yeah, it's pretty reasonable.
I heard from a lot of people that it's very beneficial.
Yeah, it is. Here, you hear a lot. There's a lot of sessions going on.
Do you go to that?
I go to that.
I have a previous experience.
Would you be willing to share the materials that you get?
Yeah, you should share the book of all of them.
Good, thank you.
Very good. We are in the process of getting some mini meetings scheduled, we do have a couple now, we're just starting with some final dates, and then I'll send it out to the ones that are on that particular committee. I'm just gonna need a date from you two on week for negotiation. So if you will, three schedules, text them to me, or email them to me, that would be fine, if any of those, you know, that one.
You want, what do you want for dates?
Like, we just, we just need the one date first.
The first off.
To do it, then when we're all together, we'll set up the list, you know, set up quite a few dates after that, so that's good to say. Yeah, if you just do that.
Yeah, we'll get that, too.
Get it on, on Google. That would be great. Uh, let's see, open house is great, and then basically give you some more details on that, and it's very successful. Again, the district will be purchasing some radios for staff on their outside, if you can put enough radios to roll around, not that everyone has to have one or else, but if you two adults out there, one of the two. So the cost is seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, and.
Is that for how many?
Four hundred twelve.
That's awesome.
I want to say it's small.
That's awesome. The last time we got a bunch of them was from a grant, but we're gonna, like, we seem to need a few each year, this is kind of a big.
Right, right, right.
Update to them, so.
In addition to the new radios, it's also extra replacing batteries for the ones that.
Sort of true.
So we have the stock.
So that's a great price, that's.
And then also, there's different activities that are going on outside, not just recess, but whatever, someone's out here, you know, in packs, you know, working packs, and something going on on here, so we need to make sure of this. So I just wanted to give you enough data on that, that's different.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Robert.
Alright, good evening, everyone, just gonna highlight a couple of different things, impossible to get to everything that's been happening over the last couple of weeks. Obviously, we had welcome to answer any questions or wonders that we've already had. First couple of weeks have gone by really quickly, you know, and I kind of chalked that up to all the kind of, you know, how positive it has been coming back, you know, as the staff, students, parents, even bus drivers, just everybody. You know, it's hard to believe that we've kind of settled in, you know, this is our first five day week, and that things are going well. It is, it is, you know, really, it's been about kind of reestablishing routines and setting goals and, you know, really working on making sure that we've extended those relationships with kids after the summer. You know, always see them all, all summer, it depends on their roles and different hats that they wear in the community and whatnot. You know, the seniors, the eighth graders and fifth graders, just to kind of highlight them, they're doing a great job, kind of set their tones in their respective areas of the building, you know, they're those role models, they are the kids that people are looking up to, and they've done a great job. We did have some pickoff assemblies and that as well, which kind of helps set the tone and just kind of make sure that everyone was off state of pace. Dr. McGee had mentioned open house, it was another fantastic showing of the barbecue style open house last night, we went through everything that we had ordered, you know, thank you to Joe for getting behind the grill, we're swinging some burgers with us. But that went well, got a lot of positive feedback from staff today, kind of chatting, you know, we were somewhere around eighty percent of families participated.
There's a ton of people here, yeah, it's a great turnout.
Yeah, no, for sure, and, you know, there, as with everything, balancing around, you know, soccer games and other, you know, evening activities, so you can never hit everybody, but I have another great part out for the second here, and I love that motto, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, a couple of other things just to highlight, Friday, our high schoolers will be having the opportunity to. Go through a team driving presentation, it's a partnership with the St. Louis Tour that works with Children's Hospital in Dartmouth. There's a video, kind of a virtual, video that the watch kind of going into it a little bit, and they're just kind of taking a kind of stop of what they could think about a couple of different, you know, risky driving habits and things like that, so dialogue, it's all between advisory periods. Through an advisory period, and then what's going to happen is, is everybody's going to have an opportunity to then get the second drive portion of it, where they're bringing simulators, where they get to simulate the strength or the under the imperative of driving, what that looks like, you know, the same, but very meaningful situation.
Supporting. Because they don't get it until they see it, yeah.
And, you know, I talked to Mr. Purbinow last year when this came up, and he said, every couple of years, they kind of reach out, it's all grand fun, it's no cost, but it's got that awareness piece for our high school, I guess, before.
We used to do prior to COVID, every three or four years, so it wasn't an every year thing, but like a mock car crash, would I feel? I wonder. I'm sorry? Yeah, prom season, yeah, I know the town has a budget line to cover some of that emergency management budget line. And I wonder if we'll start doing it, doing it again now that, I mean, COVID kind of put it under everything, but now that we're on the other side of that. It's effective, it's effective, because they talk about it forever, and every, you know, three or four years, they all, even my adults that are old, still talk about it, everyone, everyone, so and so did the whatever, yeah. It's effective.
No, for sure, something we can put on if you get closer to that season, to kind of see what's available, I know that at my, my kid's school last year, they get it before prom, and, you know, but I went out to park a lot of that kind of, you know.
Well, they keep it in the ground, so they bring a car over a little, we put it on its roof.
Yep, yeah.
And then there's an ambulance and a fire truck, and we, yeah, and they act like it's a real scene. No one, and. That's true.
Yep.
And, and, and the body bag, the whole bit, oh, yeah, it's, it's a, kids cry, and it's, oh, yeah, it's, it hits home.
Actually, it is, too.
Yeah, Delcy, Delcy, the locker was, she was, I never forget that one. She was the mother of the child in the car wreck. Oh, she's a great actress. Yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of other quick things, Rebecca Steves, Middle School Sciences, as part of the Harvard Broke, right down the road from us, and we're going to be going. Doing a project, many experiential learning opportunity through Harvard Broke with the eighth graders this year, on this kind of a trial basis with some of that, and everybody got expanding into, kind of throughout the middle school as next year rolls around, but it's going to be, Harvard Broke coming to visit us, and then our students headed over there as well. To kind of make some of that help with that soil conservation, tree growth, things like that.
That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool.
Yep, yeah, that's exciting, I like, they do some cool stuff over there.
They do, they do.
It's a great resource, it's right down the road, it is, you need that at every community, you know.
Yeah, they're lucky, yeah.
And the only other thing that I was just gonna highlight is that, you know, we're kind of off and running with some of the beginning of your back mark assessments, you know, so we're kind of going through that, a fun, all the way up through the high school, on various times through September, and then we'll be using that data to talk in terms of like, it's kind of structural, you're actually having to support students to report.
Home, honey?
Oh, we do have home coming up as well, I put it on the backside there, it is scheduled for the thirtieth, we're gonna pull some strings and move it a little bit later in the fall, so classes are, student council are getting ready for that, student council, that, yesterday was very good, yesterday, briefly decided that they wanted to have a dance, it's kind of been a while, they've had a homecoming dance.
Excellent.
So that's gonna be Friday night, kind of kick things off after a pep rally, and then we'll have all of our pets Saturday, we put in the order for the nice runner.
Playing Lisbon with you?
Yes.
Yes, of course. That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah. How do I, how do I find the schedule for a contract?
I can send it to you.
Send it, here, please.
Oh, it's not on here.
No, I couldn't find it on the website either, though.
And thank you for this again, that having the calendar is awesome, yeah, it just saves so much time to look it up, I mean, the. Try to look anything up on the website, it's frustrating, but this is very helpful.
Do we have any committee reports?
No, not at the time.
Any nominations, recommendations? Not at this time.
How many staff members have we settled? Two teachers in Paris or not?
Actually, the one teacher is, is a one man.
One teacher, one hair, oh, good, that's better, yeah, it's better than most schools, actually, yeah.
Other schools are running in like ten.
Yeah.
Exactly, yes, exactly on Paris.
Want to go south of the border, it's worse than that.
Oh, I bet.
And mass schools are absolutely devastating. I think Fred's work down here is crazy.
Wow.
I don't see, I don't see any new business, as for funds, if we could plan, we.
That is so. Yeah, as for funds, it's still, you know, doing what we're doing, and strategic plan, we work closely with that as we, as we move forward, it's very helpful.
So students representative.
I'm Mel Felix, I am the superintendent of the president's night, and first up for everyone, next Thursday, the middle of high school, we're going on a field trip to East Lake House, and we will be seeing the experience, we'll have to do a lot of things.
Thanks.
You're to be one of us, and then the week of the twenty fifth, the week of the ninth, we will be having a homecoming spirit week, and we'll be having desert days, which count as a class competition for the high schoolers.
Excellent.
But we currently don't know if it's just based on each. And then student council is also planning some daily committees for the high schoolers to do, do our plan. Like Mr. Robert said, we have a pep rally Friday the twenty ninth, and then we have the homecoming guest twenty ninth, and then homecoming the day before, the day after.
The day after.
As I have Taylor.
Other classes all ready for their homecoming fundraisers, and they're all picked out what they're gonna do?
I believe so, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, yeah.
Of course.
Thanks for coming.
Great.
Rick?
Yes, alright. So Aaron Bill sent along, and I, I'd like to put a good.
Saw that, thank you.
Uh, the goal setting that's going home, it's a mental health initiative, we're gonna be doing it in class, they're encouraging families to play, play along and work with it, and develop some goals as well, just trying to address a lot of mental health issues that we're going to be talking about, especially for the children, they're kind of always there. So you can feel free to look through those, Jess Hall and Link and. Mr. Roberts, Roberts are starting a math club as a student has requested, but they start math club, so that will be coming at some point, details to follow. And Dory Whedon is excited to offer two ELOs this year, Katie Clermont will be working with Alba Architecture doing the architecture internship, and McKenna Mack will be doing a resort management internship at Riddler Law.
Fantastic.
So with Renee Blood? Let's have you with Renee Blood, I believe so.
Excellent.
Yep, special thanks to Stuart Anderson, Renee Blood, and Amy Whitaker for supporting the yellow program, and I mean, you saw the ones last year that looked so well, and the disabled ones and all that. And the other thing I would like to add is, I was echoing a lot of hints, I'd be, this is probably the smoothest start to a year I've seen in a long time, things are well communicated and just feel really good, which, after the last, last few years of COVID, is, is a nice feeling, yeah.
I would agree on the parent, grandparent, I would echo that completely, it seems like it's shown a lot better.
Okay, I just have one more.
Yeah, sure.
Um, for the student population, the enrollment numbers, we have elementary at a hundred, this is current, elementary at a hundred and eleven, middle school at fifty nine, high school at seventy six, which in total is two hundred and forty six. In elementary, we lost six students. In middle school.
Last year, this year.
Yeah, last year, this. Yeah, last year, comparing the two numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, then middle school was two students, and high school was nine students, maybe had a, we had a large class lead, a small class, so that's what that's as well.
And like, well, they shouldn't use.
Yeah, we could do that on a monthly basis, so this could be done.
Yeah, I was looking at, two is next year's, for the Garden Age kids, there's one birth in the town, like, in from that year.
Sorry, I had, my daughter's in preschool right now, it's totally funny, I was like, kind of, I think there's like four weeks in the class, or five, or something, and beautiful class, so it's not.
I didn't look at it, it's like, I only took the number.
Yeah. I didn't look at, I.
Yeah, no, that's kind of scary numbers.
Alright, I don't see any community numbers here, so I will.
Before you do that, I have a couple of things to share. One, I was looking with this newsletter that Aaron sent over, the, in, in the thing that he printed for us there, the. Education news, North County Education News, there's a new SCL school coordinator in the last country, brand new, the school social emotional learning, is that, it's co-asset more than graphing counties, are we considered more than graphic county, do we fall into this, because that would be a great resource.
Right, we have to tap into with the.
Is that us? Do we fall in that region?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
Yeah, you should find out, because that would be a great resource for that. And it sounds like she's off and running, Anne Marie Gagnon. Um, so, yeah, I just noticed that a second ago, and then I printed something out that I wanted to share, because I was. I'm a nerd, and I go through like the households and stuff, and see what's moving, going on sometimes, and I saw one that had to do with, where it is? Houseville C twenty one, I just passed last month, and it requires public bodies to review meeting minutes with health and public disclosure at least every ten years, so not public, ones that are sealed, not public minutes that are sealed. At least every ten years to determine whether they should continue to be withheld, minutes not reviewed after ten years shall be made public. Um, so this just passed, and it gives you, it gives us ten years to come up with a policy on reviewing them, and, the policy to review them, excuse me, and that same ten years to get them all reviewed, to determine which ones need to remain sealed and which ones don't. Now, I know, as I've been on board, we've never looked at any non-public minutes ever, I know the town of Lincoln, we have a color slow period, which is not really slow anymore, we'll go through and, like, every other meeting, review two or three or four sets, depending on how big they are of non-public minutes, every other year. So all of the town of Lincoln's non-public sealed meeting minutes get reviewed every other year, I don't know if, how many the school has, or, or anything, I mean, you'll have to look and see how, that we, we need, we should have a policy in place and get it done, I mean, there's time, there's no rush. But if in ten years, if we haven't reviewed and determined whether they remain sealed or not, they are unsealed, and that's probably not a good thing, so I just saw that, so I wanted to bring it to.
Is that a rolling ten year period, so like, anything ten years or older gets unsealed immediately, and then?
No.
And as that ten year.
No, you have ten years from last, I think it was August sixth of whatever the past, you have ten years from that date to review and determine if those minutes are still to be sealed, and at that ten year mark, they are all unsealed, if we haven't done anything. So, I mean, we have ten years, it's not a rush, but it's something that should be, we need to develop a policy for reviewing them, and we need to review them.
So does that mean ten, the last ten years, that ten years on, you go around that, and become public right now, or not?
Within ten years, if we don't have a policy, we can't seal the minutes according to that, we do, you need to have, we need to have a policy in place to, to review minutes.
Well, the, I mean, Hampshire Schoolwork Association is still working on the policies that, right, along with the legislature that.
I would assume they'll come up with one for that, I mean, and like I said, it's ten years, so it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but I saw that, and I thought, oh, I don't ever remember reviewing them this or whatever, even when we never required to, so now we have. And it's part of the ninety one A, right to know, you know, to make sure that we're being as transparent and as possible with the public, so, anyway, I saw that today when I was. Being a nerd.
Are these sealed?
Those are not sealed, but we do have sealed minutes.
So I would say that since I've been on board, almost six years, that we have never sealed.
I already told you that it's more that they were.
Oh, yes, they are, there's many.
Alright, well, I mean, maybe, yeah, then maybe, I can look at it. I'm just saying.
I can say, I don't want to.
Yeah, I can just say that, I don't think, I've ever, we've ever been asked.
Come up with something that, like, every three years, depending on how many there are, I mean, if there are hundreds, maybe we do, you know, every other meeting or something. But if we have ten sets, then maybe every five years we review them or something. Yeah, it's not.
And, and so it's only the sealed.
Only the sealed.
Not everything, not politician. Not everything, not public attention.
Correct. Right, exactly. Well, the reason why our minutes were like this is because they were taking detailed minutes, sealing them all the time. And then that kind of policy changed that um, the, the school's attorney came in and told the school board at the time, it was kind of during the um, the Sue and Judy era, um, said, you don't have to keep detailed minutes. Sometimes it's, it's beneficial to do so in non-public, keeps a detailed minutes so that we know what's going on. Like, if we're gonna buy a piece of property or sell a piece of property, we'll seal those so that we don't give away any negotiating tactics. But then, and they'll be pretty detailed. But then once the sale or the purchase has gone through, they could be unsealed. So they might be, we've done some of those in town that we've it was fifty years ago, they sold that. We don't need to seal that anymore, you know. So it's, or it could be something with a bunch of names in it that we don't want anybody to.
I'm sure the school board association will be promulgating the policy.
Right.
Or proposed policy will be.
I'm sure.
For your review.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and that you can bring to the board. Uh, because that, you know, that's what, that's what they do. They take these things and then they give us a policy. And then we'll, you know, we can vote on what we want to do with it at that point.
There's some fact that they said after ten years, it will shall become public.
So this was uh, effective October thirtieth.
No, August last month, right?
Well, I mean, approved August, but effective October is six years after package. So
Oh.
So we have ten, ten years from October third point twenty three before we need to
Perfect.
make any significant moves on that. Unless it's going to take a lot of time to do all that. Probably the sooner the better we start that.
At least look and see. Because if we only have three sets, then it's not really really that much of an issue. But if there's drawers still somewhere.
Yeah.
We might want to start on the, I've never seen them. In the dreamy aside.
Awesome. Yeah, like I said, I I don't think I, I can't recall any time where we sealed a couple of minutes of non-public sessions.
They used to all the time.
Well. Um, all with that. So I, I didn't know that you had scheduled that executive session.
Right.
We are missing quite a few people tonight.
Yeah, I would say.
So I think it might make sense to do that next.
I have a board, yeah. I mean.
Kevin, Kevin has joined for five minutes, so.
Okay, of course.
Well, he wouldn't be able to just be anywhere in that executive session, so.
Right, with that, I will uh, entertain this with you.
So moves.
Director Hammy, there you go. All of the favorites.
Good job.